If I can ask you all to be seated. I have a gavel. I'm not afraid to use it, people. If I can ask you all to be seated and we can get started. Welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, May the 7th, 2019. As per the board's bylaws, in the absence of the Chair, the Vice Chair shall preside over the meeting. Please be reminded that this meeting is being recorded and will be posted later on the Board's YouTube channel. That's a note to self. Before we begin, I would like to welcome our new 2019-2020 Student Trustees to the Board Table. The students will be introduced later on in the agenda, and we also have Trustee Guzzo who is joining us via teleconference. Trustee Guzzo, are you still there?
I am.
Oh, thank you. Opening prayer. Trustee Herrera, would you please lead us in the opening prayer, the National Anthem, and the Oath of Citizenship?
Thank you. Please join me in the sign of our faith, in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Heavenly Father, as we come to a close in day two of Catholic Education Week, let us keep in our prayers the staff and students of the Jean Vanyer Secondary School community as their role model and patron of their school, Jean Vanyer, has passed away this morning. Lord, we thank you for this gift of life that you have given Jean Vanyer, as he has most definitely taught the Milton community, this school board, the global Larch community, and everyone around the world of what it means to accept, include, and serve with love. He will always remain as a model of true Christian leadership for our students and staff. May we always remember to do ordinary things with extraordinary amounts of love. In the global spreading of his powerful moving initiative, we recognize all the good works and recognize the blessing and dedication of our newest school to the Board, the Milton Community, and the Jean Vanyer Family of Elementary Schools, St. Scholaska Elementary School. As we continue to move throughout this blessed Catholic Education Week, let us always remember that we must walk with Jesus, and in doing so demonstrate Jesus' acts of love and kindness at the Walk with Jesus event at the Milton Velodrome this Thursday. In Jesus' name we pray. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Moving on to item 1.2, motions adopted in camera. There were no motions adopted in camera. 1.3, information received in camera. Trustee O'Hearn Zarnata, will you please read the information received in camera?
I will. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following information was received in camera. Secondary School Vice Principal Catherine Sarafim appointed as Secondary School Vice Principal effective September 1st, 2019. Elementary School Principals Chris Tilly and Amri Total appointed as Elementary School Principals effective September 1st, 2019. Elementary School Vice Principals Martin Simon and Amri Melchiona appointed as Elementary School Vice Principals effective September 1st, 2019. The list of department heads, acting department heads, special education consultants, retirements and resignations will be listed in the minutes of this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Trustee Zarnata. Item 2, approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda? It's moved by Trustee Agnew, seconded by Trustee Duarte.
Yeah, so under action items as 8.6, I'd like to suggest a motion that the Board of Trustees request that senior staff provide an information report regarding the approval, the procedures to approving high school mission trips and why they were stopped. And I have a full motion if you want me to read it out or I can say it.
If you could read the motion.
Be it resolved that the HCDSB Board of Trustees request an information report from senior staff regarding the procedures to approving high school mission trips and information on why they were stopped.
Rosie, did you get all of that?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Student trustees can't pass a motion, so...
Do we have a trustee who would like to pick that motion up?
Sure.
Trustee Carabella?
Sure, I'll say that motion. I'll read whatever you said.
So we'll...
Would it not be a notice of motion that we put it on at the end of the meeting for the next one?
Oh, what you're doing is you're adding an item to tonight's agenda. The motion is to add an item to the discussion?
Yeah, well, the motion is to request a staff report, mostly for the next board meeting, allowing senior staff to comprise the information regarding the trips and sort of why they were stopped and the approval procedures of them. So it can be added on as a discussion item?
I think it would start as a discussion item.
Or senior staff would like time to comprise a report, then we could do it as an information item for the next meeting.
So the motion is to add as a discussion item?
The mission trips.
Okay. And we have a seconder in Trustee Intomasi. I believe would require two-thirds approval to pass. We call for a recorded vote. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Maza?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Herrera?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Zarnata?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Charleval?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
Motion passes.
Yeah, I'd suggest we add it as an item under information, which would be 1014, I think.
Mr. Chair, so that motion is that the agenda be approved as amended, because we're adding an agenda item?
Okay. Do we have a mover to approve the agenda as amended? Trustee Intomasi, seconded by Trustee Carabella. Let's have a recorded vote. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Maza?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Herrera?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Zarnata?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Charleval?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo? Motion passes. Declaration of Conflicts of Interest. Are there any declarations of conflicts of interest? Trustee O'Brien?
I am declaring conflict of interest on item 10.5, Budget Report. Salary and benefits for teachers are mentioned. My teacher is a wife of the Board.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Trustee O'Brien. Number four, Presentations. 2018-2019 Bullying Prevention Awards: See the Problem, Be the Solution. In Superintendent Pennelli's absence, I invite Superintendent Crowell to lead the presentation.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. It's my pleasure to step in from Superintendent Pennelli tonight to present to you the award winners for our 2019 See the Problem, Be the Solution campaign awards. As you know, this is an initiative that's supported greatly by our student trustees. We had 32 elementary schools and six secondary schools with approximately 220 students participating. And on April 4th, 2019, the participants were invited to our gala at Corpus Christi Secondary School, and there were 12 contenders that were voted on, and we are very pleased to present the award winners this evening. First, we'll call up the group from St. Joan of Arc Catholic Elementary School to show their poster.
Hi, welcome. We're from St. Joan of Arc, and we would like to say thank you that our poster from the Board, Every Bit Matters, Be the Change That God Wants Us to Be, representing the two sides of bullying, on the left side, the sort of darker side of the bullying aspect, and on the other side, the brighter respect of bullying. And these students did a phenomenal job in terms of creating this poster with our whole class. Yes. I have Isabella Chopshinsky. I have Riley Shepherd, Isabella Suarez, and Marla Desau, in great state.
At this time, we'd like to call up our Chair, Trustee Murphy, and our Director, Mr. Daly, to come up for a photo. Thank you very much. At this time, we'd like to move on to the winner of the song category from Jean Vanyer Catholic Secondary School. At this time, we are going to play their song, and then we will call them up to introduce themselves and to receive their award. And finally, we have the winners of the best video category from Holy Trinity Catholic Secondary School. It's entitled Sing Your Own Song. At this point, we'd just like to extend congratulations not only to all the award winners, but all the students that participated in this wonderful event and initiative. So thank you very much.
We'd like to thank everybody who joined, and obviously thank the parents and teachers who directed these exceptional talents. We're very fortunate to have such bright, shining stars as our future. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, we congratulate you. I now ask that you and your families make your way to the lobby so more pictures can be taken. Thank you very much. Item number five, we have two delegations regarding French programming this evening. Each delegation will be given 10 minutes to speak. Trustees will have an opportunity at the end of each delegation to ask questions for clarification purposes. I invite Ms. Cambone to present her delegation.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to delegate tonight. My name is Natalie Camboni, and I am a parent on the EFI student at St. Mary's. I am here for the same reasons that we all here for, for the success of students. I thought it was important to delegate tonight before the French policy would be presented to you at next week's board meeting, and to highlight to you, the trustee, the importance of this policy. I believe that it is important that everyone knows the history of what has transpired regarding optional French programming in recent years, from the parent's perspective and have some facts to consider. In 2013, the Halton Catholic District School Board started the EFI pilot program in each municipality. The breakdown of the program was 50% in English and 50% in French. In 2016, parents who were looking to register their child in the 2017 year did not see the information on the Board website. They decided to call the Board, and this is when parents were blindsided and informed that the program was going to be voted on at the next meeting and will be abolished. This is when 10 delegations happened on December 2016. The decision was made that they would create the ad hoc committee. The role of the ad hoc committee, which you can find on the Board's website, was to review the optional French program offered in our school district and come back to the Board of Trustees with a recommendation that includes a multi-year plan to address and resolve the ongoing challenges in delivering these programs. In October 2017, the ad hoc committee put a proposal forward that the Board could not sustain both EFI and EF. It was recommended to phase out the EFI program. A survey went out to the stakeholders in both programs to vote in favor or not of this recommendation. The majority of stakeholders were against the recommendation. Even with the results of the survey, the ad hoc committee did not change their opinion. This is when the second round of delegations happened on November 7, 2017. 17 delegations. By the short history I give you, do you think the ad hoc committee did what they were mandated to do? Do you think the Board was transparent? This is why, on December 2017, in the united vote, the trustee voted to keep the EFI program and move from a pilot to permanent program. Another vote was made that evening, and passed that EFI would continue through high school and busing would continue. In addition, senior staff was asked to report back to the Board of Trustees in December of each year, 2018, 2019, with a report that must include hiring practices, retention figures, current pool numbers, and any and all information as it pertains to the sustainability of the FI program. It was apparent that evening how parents and trustees came together as a united force for the benefits of the students. I do recommend that you listen to the 2016 and 2017 delegation. I've included the link on the website of the video and all the reports. I've also included the link of the vote, which happened on November 21st, 2017. Teacher Shortest, is this real, unreal? Yes, it's real. But why do other boards have running programs and at a much higher scale than us? Plus, they are expanding and see value in this program. How do they do it? What do they do that we don't? Are they hiring earlier than us? Are they recruiting teachers somewhere that we're not? Are we going to all the possible universities that we can, or are we just focusing on some? Should we start thinking outside the box? In 2017, I delegated on teachers from Quebec. Did you know that 45% of teachers in Quebec do not have a permanent position? This is around 46,000 teachers. This is our neighboring province. Did you know the salaries of teachers is much higher here in Ontario than Quebec, and we pay much less taxes here? In B.C., they are actually going to France to recruit teachers. The Catholic Church in Canada was founded because of them. Did you know in France, they pay a lot more taxes than here? Did you know in Quebec, they have seen in the last few years a rise in immigrants from France? Are we doing all that we can? Please note that in just two years, our EFI program in the four municipalities will be fully staffed all the way to grade eight. Our EFI teachers are doing a fabulous job, and they can now serve as mentors to new staff and encourage and support one another. Why wouldn't we want to not only retain our numbers but grow them in this incredible program? Why do parents choose to put their children in EFI? To give their child the equal opportunity as our neighbor in the public To give their child the equal opportunity as our neighbor in the public boards? They value early language acquisition. English and French are our official language of Canada. To build their child's resume, to open doors for their future employment. Students in EF or EFI show in high school they have average of a higher grade than core students. TDSB has recently done a review of their French program. Their finding was interesting. Students in EFI and EF have less resources, but when they take a look at their high school grades, they average higher grades than the students in core. Wouldn't this fit in the Halton Catholic District School Board achievement goal? Why wouldn't our board want to grow just a little more in regards to optional French programming? Considering if there's a demand. I've included in my report the link to the recent research on the TDSB. Concerning us, the parents, and optional French programming, I want to address a few false perceptions out there. We do not want to make our board French. We do not want to kick out the core students out of our schools. I invite you to come and see how welcoming each of the schools have been to the program, how the students work and play together, how beautiful our Christmas concerts and larynxes are with the mix of students. And I will invite you tonight to St. Mary's on June 6 at our Starlight Festival. I invite you all, including Mr. Daly, all the trustees, all the superintendent, to come see what a great community it is. Let's meet the growing demand.
Excuse me, Ms. Cambone, I don't mean to interrupt you. You have one minute left.
Okay. So, let's meet the growing demand. Enrollment in elementary school has been declining across Ontario. Average, while at the same time, French immersion is increasing. I'm just going to go to my conclusion and talk about why this policy is important. This policy is important because it will send a message to the parents who have had faith to keep their children in EFI and have faith in the Halton Catholic District School Board. This policy is going to encourage the future elementary graduates of EFI at the Halton Catholic District School Board to continue and pursue their education in the Catholic Board. This policy will eliminate this tough decision parents, Catholic parents have to make for their young ones between the public and Catholic Board. This policy is going to grow our board further, ensure that Catholics stay in the Catholic Board. Their trustee, this is in your hands, please ensure that siblings have equal opportunity to ensure we do not lose more people to the public Board and grow with the demand.
Thank you. Do trustees have any questions or clarifications? We'll start with Mr., sorry, trustee Duarte and then trustee O'Brien, trustee Carabella.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Camboni, for your delegation here. I just want to understand why you are presenting this. Are you fearful that this program will be canceled? Is this something that you're worried about?
The reason I'm delegating, I'm a parent very involved at St. Mary's. I know a lot of families, we've grown together. The reason I'm delegating is currently at St. Mary's, from my knowledge, there could be a higher number. There's 50 students on the waitlist. They're siblings. They're siblings of my son's friends. Sometimes they're the second or third child that's on the waitlist that we know will not get in. And to me, it's important, they're siblings and a parent has to make a decision, right, on giving one child the opportunity of this great program and the other not. And I don't think this is fair. As a parent, how do you decide between your Catholic faith and French study? How do you decide one child deserves this program and one not? Then the parent has to make the decision, okay, I will move. There's a few families, they're moving that sibling to the public Board. What is the fear we're installing in them? We're sending them to the public Board. If they like it a little more, well, they'll pull the other childrens out. Are we going to lose more students now to the public Board? How many students have we already lost that we do not know to the public Board because of this program? There is over 11,000 students in EFI in the Halton Catholic District, in the public Board. How many of those are Catholic that didn't even choose our Board because they didn't want to go through the lottery or the hardship of deciding between French studies or Catholic religion? So, this is why I'm delegating, because to show you how important this policy is and it's going to probably move us forward to grow our numbers in the EFI program with the demand.
Trustee O'Brien?
Thank you to Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Camboni, for your delegation. Just for clarification, your slide on teacher shortages seems to indicate that our hiring practices here at Halton Catholic are not quite as good as some other boards. What are you basing that on? Do you have any evidence of this?
Well, I'm basing this on 2016 and 2017 when we delegated. The reasons of the board was there's shortage of teachers. The other reason is in the TDSB, they do put a quote that our board is stating there is a crisis. In 2017, I believe Sacred Heart of Jesus, the grade threes didn't have a teacher for a few months. While other boards are growing, with some boards are growing with the demand, some boards are larger than us, some boards are smaller than us. And they're hiring teachers and they're not using, they're working with finding these teachers. So, my theory comes from what's been told to me from like the excuse parents have heard as to why there's no growth, because parents in the waitlist have asked the school, why is there not growth? Are they expanding to another site? There's a demand and the excuse is always, there is no teachers. And to me, as a parent, when I see in the province beside us where this is where I grew up, that there's 46,000 teachers without a permanent position, why aren't we pursuing this a little more?
Trustee Carabella?
Thank you. Just to clarify, because you didn't get through your whole presentation, you do mention several things. What would you say would be the top concern that most of your experience with early French immersion parents? What would be their most top concern?
The parents have an anxiety of the lottery in regards to the siblings. The parents have concern, why are other boards growing and we are not? Some boards have unlimited, they accept everybody. Some boards who accept everybody, this means the students get in. The boards that have a cap on numbers have a sibling ruling. Our board does not have a sibling ruling and we have a cap. So, there's an anxiety. There's an anxiety at lottery time, there's an anxiety, am I going to get that second child in? So, there's a constant anxiety. And these parents believe and have faith in this board and have faith in this program or they won't stick around. It's an incredible program. The teachers have done an awesome job.
Thank you. Thank you for delegating.
Do we have any further questions? No? Trustees are not to?
Just a couple of questions for clarification. So, take it in the spirit that I'm asking it, okay? So, we say that some boards are going to B.C. to recruit. So, do we know how successful that recruitment is out in B.C.? How many teachers they've actually brought to Ontario?
Well, it's B.C., the province of B.C. is actually flying to France to recruit their teachers.
Okay, so, I'll reject my question. So, do we know how many people from France are coming?
I don't have that number. I could research it and find it for you if you want. That's something I could look into.
Awesome. That'd be great. And I'm not quite up to speed on the sibling ruling. So, just for my own clarification, so if I have three children and one is in the French program now, that's asking that the other two children are automatically enrolled? But then if I have, if another family has one child, they may not get in because the other siblings will get in ahead of them? Could that potentially happen?
If there's a waitlist, for sure, yes, it could potentially happen.
Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Cambone. Trustees will be responding to your delegation further in the agenda under action items 8.1. Thank you. I now invite Mr. Campbell to present his delegation.
Mr. Chair, dear trustees, Mr. Daly, Director of Education, greeting here. I want to extend greetings to all the senior staff and the public that's with us today. My name is Marcio Campos. I have two children in the system, elementary, a son in grade three at Sacred Heart of Jesus in the French immersion program and a daughter in senior kindergarten in St. Mark's. I have lived through the discussions that took place in 2016 and 17 that Natalie reminded us of here. Through that process, I met and we had, we found great support in an organization called CPF, for Canadian Parents for French. I've since joined as a volunteer and learned and continue to learn a whole lot of what the experience of other communities in other jurisdictions is with regards to French and second language programming. And you might recall that since December, we've been, I've been writing some letters to all of you to try to share some of that information, to give you some background on what's out there. Hopefully, that's helpful for your decisions going forward. I'm mindful of the time constraint we have, so I'm going to really try to zip through what I have to cover. The first thing is knowing that your engagement discussions about FFL and the potential policies towards that, I want to remind you, the first, very first email I sent you was introducing you to that document from the Ministry of Education, the Framework for FFL in Ontario. That's a document that acknowledges the benefits of second language acquisition. It states the relevance and importance of French as a language for our Canadian identity. And most importantly, it sets up a way to work within the boards to develop and implement policies. And it sets three goals for FFL in our province. The first goal is to increase student confidence, proficiency, and achievement. Confidence, proficiency, and achievement. The second goal is to increase the number of students that go studying French all the way to graduation because there's a big drop, right, in core French. It's mandatory from grade four to grade nine and you see a great drop in enrollment in grade 10. And the third goal is to engage or increase engagement from students, teachers, educators, community, and all that. So, I think that the important piece here is what the school boards are doing, including ourselves, to contribute towards those three goals, right? What is our plan? The framework actually requests that the boards put together three-year plans and report in progress and represent those plans. So, it's important that you know and get familiar with whatever we are doing towards that. Speaking of policy, I think it's important to mention that within the Ministry of Education, there is a team called the FFL Policy Implementation Unit. It's a group of staff, you know, that's dedicated to assisting boards doing what you're discussing, implementing policies towards that. Those are the people who wrote the FFL framework. So, it's, I would highly recommend that whoever's working on that policy touch base with those people. I want to share a few data and some information with you. This is just data from enrollment in general for elementary panel alone, okay? And it's hard to get updated information, so this is 2016-17. Total enrollment, as reported by school boards through the Ontario School Information System, we had roughly 1.2 million students. 28% of that were in Catholic boards. And our board, according to those numbers, represents 1.8% of the elementary students. So, out of 51, we're the 18th largest out of 25 Catholic boards. When we look at FFL now, on core French, on average, out of the province, 47% of students are in elementary, are enrolled in core French. When you limit that to Catholic boards, that's 55%. And that's mainly because the two, two of the three biggest boards, Toronto and York, have chosen to start core French in grade one. When you look at our board, we're 43.4% of the students, 43rd overall, 19th between the 25 Catholics. When we look at immersion, so extended in French immersion altogether, province on average 17%, Catholic boards 16%, our board 8.6%. When we combine the two of them, core and immersion, extended, or French immersion, so all disciplines of FFL, 64% of the students in the province are enrolled, within Catholic boards 72%, we're at 56%. 47 overall out of 51, 24 out of 25. Now, as I said, this is outdated, it's two years old, but I think it's, and it's not the absolute number because that doesn't put in consideration confidence, achievement, proficiency, but it is data on just a number of people who have access to any sort of French programming. So, where do you grow? Do you bring core to grade one just like Toronto did? That's an option, right? It's a possibility. Now, the downsides are, there's no curriculum, the curriculum starts in grade four, and there's no additional funding. So, you might recall from the funding documentation that the ministry provides additional funding for FFL starting in grade four for core and starting in grade one for French immersion. So, if you decide that to put some core French programming in grade one, two, and three, there's no additional funding for that and the kids actually already have a teacher in the classroom. You need an external teacher to come teach French, so that's real additional cost. As opposed to the French immersion where the teacher teaches French as their regular teacher, right? It's a bit of a different structure in terms of cost. What should an FFL policy cover? And I want to go briefly around this. First one is school. You want to make sure that you state your alignment to the curriculum, to the framework that the ministry has put out there, that you understand and commit to the goals that are presented and how, you know, we're going to work towards them. And then define what programs you want to offer in the interim points. The second important thing is access. Every children, every child who wants to study French, regardless of programs that we offer, should be able to have access to that, right? And if there is a demand, and of course, there's oppression challenges that have to be addressed, but I think the policy, you know, you should be stating that we want to strive to meet that demand, whatever it is, so that parents aren't forced to do the decisions that Natalie was mentioning. And as I said, if programs are capped, most boards do that. If you can't offer access to everyone and you're going to cap them, it's going to be unfair to someone. Now, it's the next priority among the families that already have one or two siblings in there. So, we're really thinking that a family acceptance system, at least for the family that had the fortunate opportunity of getting in, at least you're not splitting those guys down the road. In terms of equity and transparency, you want to make sure that there is access to the student from a genetic standpoint, right? You want to map that and track that and understand if there is any underserved or underprivileged neighborhoods. Of course, there's slight selection criteria that the board already has in some of its sort of policy. I think the most important criteria here is whatever changes are made in staff and director of education needs flexibility to do whatever it has to do things efficiently. The community has to be advised, consulted, notified about it so that we can react and plan on that. Not sure how much more time I have. Three minutes. Inclusion, I think this is a very important part and we have to make sure that's part of that. The Ministry of Education has a separate document that I haven't shared with you and I will, and it's attached to this presentation, including students with special needs, special education students in FFL. Just the notion that FFL is for everyone. I think one of the most common mistakes that, you know, you can put in any FFL program is if you don't provide the proper support to the students who need and deserve that support, what ends up happening is you push the students away from the program. And the perverse effect of that is that every student that needs additional support doesn't get it, can't perform, you start suggesting that they're not capable, you know, of handling that, you push them away. You will end up creating a two-tier, you know, a program that You will end up creating a two-tier, you know, a program that truly is elitist, you know, that's full of overachievers, and that's, I think it would be not something that we would want to have in any of our programs. So, you want to make sure that there's adequate support for all students, you know, that need access to it. And you want to make sure that you monitor exemptions and transfer for the programs. The other item there is involvement. One of the best practices of, and we would suggest that you consider that, having a standing committee, an advisory committee on FFL, you know, to further engage the community, teachers, and of course, there's no policy that takes any effect if there's no accountability measure to it. So, you want to make sure there is some sort of reporting structure to understand how we're doing towards the goals. I've listed, you know, topics for you to all that we've talked about over here.
Mr. Campbell, you've reached your limit. You can finish your thought, but you've reached your limit.
All right, I'm, I'm just gonna follow through. I always want to talk about transportation and financial implications, but you're welcome to look through the presentation. I'm, I'm willing to answer and engage in conversations, I'll stay after the meeting as well, you know, if, if I can contribute in any way I should perform. Okay?
Thank you. Do trustees have any questions for clarification? Mr. Duarte? Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our board is a, an equitable board, okay? And you talked about family acceptance, okay? That means if one child in the family gets accepted to the program, automatically, automatically the second child or third child should get accepted to the program. Can you explain to me how, how it's equitable to all the students across the board, and how it places everybody in, in the level playing field? It does not place, in my view?
It's not.
Yeah.
It's not. If we don't offer the spots that the demand is there, it's not gonna be ever. So, that's why I think it's important to understand there's challenges to that, you may not do it like this, but we have to have a vision of growing, extending to meet that demand. Until we do that, we can't really say, like, how is, how is, you know, a lottery equitable?
Do you, do you have a follow-up question?
I'll ask a question after.
Okay. Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, it's you, Mr. Chair. I was intrigued reading this over about your, the, the F, this advisory committee. Do you have any experience with that in other boards, or have seen it functioning, and what sort of resources does that bring forward?
So, that's, there is a limited amount of boards that actually have implemented that. The most significant one, you know, from a size perspective, is Toronto Public, Toronto Public School Board. They have a FFL permanent standing committee for decades now. Over there, you know, it's comprised of public trustees, there's parents who are elected within the wards, there's staff members, and they meet every month. They, they review concerns that are brought forward by the community, they review indicators, you know, and, like, equity and access are always subjects of discussion, and, and put forward reports and suggestions to the board periodically. I have not participated, never seen any of those. And I could pull up a number of Catholic boards that, that do that, I just don't have that information in hand right now.
Trustee O'Brien, and then trustee Duarte.
Thank you, too, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your presentation. I'm looking at the slide on financial implications, and I'm trying to make some sense of it, just for clarification. So are you saying that to educate a child in a French immersion program is going to cost us more, same, less? Can you just clarify that?
So, the ministry provides, as I said, a, an FFL location that's part of a language grant, that's part of the special grants within the GSN, and that's the table I had on that slide over there, depending on the core standard in French immersion, what the numbers are. So, that, that money is supposed to fund additional costs to provide FFL programs, to deliver FFL programs, right? When we have that clear definition ahead, like, what are the additional costs? Because when you get into a extended French or a French immersion program, you know, you, like in our, in our model, we have 50/50. So you've got two teachers with two classes, and they're changing, you know, half day, one class a year. So you have, if, if there was no French immersion, those kids would still be there in the classroom. There would still be a teacher there. So the space is there, the labor is there, so of course, there's resources that have to be brought in and bought and all that. But what are the true additional costs, and how is there the true additional funding? And, you know, a big part, from what I hear from other boards, and, you know, other people from SPF, a big part of that is really transportation, because if you don't offer across all sites, you're gonna be buzzing in an inefficient way, right? That's another expectation. But I think it's a, it's a relevant question that, that we understand. Like, I don't know, I, I think it's important, if you raise those questions, what is truly, what are the additional costs that we have to deliver our programs? And what is the additional funding we get, right, for all three programs? What are those costs that are shared between the all three, which ones are particular? I think those are all pertinent questions, that, you know, it's important to understand. I don't have those answers, I, I just have a question.
Trustee Duarte?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You skipped a, a very important part of the top of your presentation, that's transportation.
Yeah.
Okay. Transportation, as you know, is not mandated for this particular program, but the boards of, board of trustees have, have elected to provide transportation for this program. If you're talking about expanding the program, and right now, the money is coming out from our reserves, okay? So there's no money which is allocated to that, but we are taking money from our reserves, and we are paying for transportation. If you have to expand the program and, and increase the number of seats and capacity, how do we account for this? Where is the money going to come from? Number one. Number two is, we have to be equitable, as I said before. We have various programs across the board, and all are important. We have to be equitable to that. So are we also, are we denying someone else transportation, to provide transportation to this program? What are your thoughts on that?
Okay. So, the second question, I can't answer, because I, I don't, I don't know what programs we fund transportation or not. I think transportation is important, because it provides some levels of equity in terms of access, because I'm gonna use the word in an example that's close to heart, okay? Sacred Heart of Jesus is upper middle and Walker's line. So, if I have a 511 that can auto-shot, I'm gonna be buzzing my kid for an hour to get here, right? And if there's no bus, even, even worse. So, transportation is an important piece. Now, transportation gets really expensive in the model, because you have to bus kids from all over the town into the one point. If you expand, I'm not suggesting you expand that at Sacred Heart, but you start, you know, that's highly inefficient, you're going 10 kilometers away to, to bus kids. Once you split, and you have a second location that's far apart, now you cut that area they have to cover in half. So, the solution to bring the transportation costs down, because you offer transportation to every other student in regular program, right? That's, we, that, we do that, we have rent for that, right? I'm not sure if it's properly funded or not by the ministry, but if, with that in mind, what you want to do is increase the efficiency of the transportation, so that it is cheaper for a student. And the, the way to do that is to expand the program and spread it across the geography, so that you diminish the amount of trouble that has to happen, and increase the efficiency. That's my take on it, I'm not sure if, what do you think about it?
Trustee Agnew?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. It's probably just more a question for staff, so, and you specifically spoke about Sacred Heart of Jesus, I'm just gonna bring that up. But we know that we have capacity issues at a number of schools that offer optional French programming. So if we were to look at, you know, that sibling piece, what do the capacity issues look like as far as those schools that are currently at capacity? I have to think that has to be a consideration.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We are dealing with this in policy next week, and we are committed to bringing a report to policy under the discussion item, so we're happy to do that at that point.
No further questions? Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
I want to thank you again for, for your time, and encourage you to understand what the demand is for each one of those programs, and hopefully, you know, strive to, to improve access, equity, and inclusion in all of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 6.1, minutes of the April 2nd, 2019 Regular Board Meeting. I will ask for a mover and a seconder to approve the minutes. Trustee Agnew and trustee Duarte, all in favor? Motion carries. Item 6.2, minutes of the April 9th, 2019 Special Board Meeting. I ask for a mover and a seconder to approve those minutes. Trustee Intamasi is a mover, trustee Zarnata is a seconder. All in favor? Motion carries. Item 7.1, summary of outstanding items from previous meetings. The next item on our agenda is business arising from previous meetings. The table in your package includes a running list of matters pending from previous meetings. No questions or comments on that?
Chair, a question?
Yes, trustee Duarte.
So, item number one, the transportation to AP, is that what you're talking about is going to be discussed next week? Is, that there was a date there in the past, the date has gone, so I'm just wondering if that's being discussed next meeting?
At the next board meeting?
To clarify, the first item here, transportation to AP and IB program, I think there was a date, uh, yeah, the status, there, there was a date over there, so I'm just wondering if that date is being worked on? Is it, are we working on that policy, or what?
I'm not sure why they made 21st date.
I apologize, it's, it's at the bottom. Sorry.
Moving on to action items, 8.1, response to delegations. In accordance with policy I-06, delegation to the board, trustees may move a motion to, number one, make a decision on the presentation at the same meeting. Number two, refer the matter to a future meeting. Number three, request a staff report on the matter to be considered at a future, future meeting. Or number four, receive as information. I open the floor to any trustee motions regarding the, the, pardon me, the delegations, it's been a long day, from Ms. Cambon. Trustee Duarte?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to put a motion to receive as info.
Do we have a seconder? Trustee Intamasi, seconds. Do we have any questions? Or call a vote? Sorry, trustee O'Brien?
So we're gonna discuss this, correct?
Certainly.
Um, information, we could receive it as information, but I, I'm kind of leaning towards the staff report. I mean, some things were said in this delegation about, we're not meeting our hiring needs, things like that. I'd like to kind of hear what staff would have to say about that. That, that's what's the thing that's burning in me. I hear a delegation saying that we're not doing all we can to hire French teachers. I would like to know what staff has to say about that, so we'll be taking as information. I think we need to take a step further, that's just my opinion.
Is there any other comments? Trustee Carabella?
Well, would some of those issues come up next at the policy meeting? All those things could come up and have staff be prepared for those type of questions we could ask.
So, currently, it's, the motion has been put forward to accept as information. The discussion, trustee O'Brien commented that potentially there is a motion churning in there? Do you have, do you have a motion?
Not yet.
Okay. Okay. So we have, we have a motion from trustee Duarte, we have a seconder?
Just have a question.
Certainly.
So, through you, Mr. Chair. So, to trustee O'Brien, so are you looking for a staff report specific to the HR piece? Or are you looking to have that included as part of the report that's being provided as part of the policy?
Good question. Thank you, too, Mr. Chair. I'd like to see that part of it, but if, if this is gonna come in the policy discussion next week, I think I would be satisfied with that. Thank you.
Okay, let's have a recorded vote on the, the motion to accept Ms. Cambon's presentation as information. I'll switch sides, because I was favoring you, trustee Carabella, which I always do. Trustee Guzzo, would you like to start off the vote?
I need to clarify, because I'm having a hard time hearing. The motion is to accept the delegation as information only.
Correct.
Then trustee O'Brien doesn't have a motion?
That's correct.
Okay. And in all fairness, I'm, I'm just beyond the idea of your answer for votes, I'm having a really difficult time hearing, so I'm only thinking of going along with the delegation. So some of the questions I did miss, so I'm gonna abstain from voting at this point, because I, I'm not sure that I have any intention of receiving information.
Okay, that's a fair assessment. Trustee Charlebois?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Zarnata?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Herrera?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Mazza?
In favor.
Trustee Intamasi?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Motion passes. With regards to, to Mr. Campos' delegation, I open up the floor to any trustees with motions regarding this. Would you like me to run through the four options again? So option number one is to make a decision on the presentation at the same meeting. Number two is refer the matter to a future meeting. Number three is request a staff report on the matter to be considered at a future meeting. Or number four is to receive as information.
Go ahead. I would just like to make a motion, if this is tied to the policy also in the same theme, to make a motion to bring it in as information? Thank you. Receive as information.
Okay. Do we have a seconder? Trustee Intamasi is a seconder. We shall call, is there any discussion? Mr. O'Brien, I'm looking at you. Trustee O'Brien? No? Okay, we'll call for a vote. I'll start with you, trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee Mazza?
In favor.
Trustee Intamasi?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
Okay.
Trustee Charlebois?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Zarnata? Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Herrera?
In favor.
Item 8.2, rescind policy I-13, Appointment of Architect. Trustee Guzzo moved the motion by trustee Guzzo, and I'm, and I have a seconder for this item.
Okay, do you have any other legal issues?
Yes, if you could.
It resides with the House of Commons, the School Board, except the recommendation of the Policy Committee of Policy I-13, Appointment of Architect.
Do we have a seconder? Trustee Agnew, discussion? We'll have a recorded vote, all in favor. Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Mazza?
In favor.
Trustee Intamasi?
Against.
Trustee Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Charlebois?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Zarnata?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Herrera?
In favor.
Motion passes. Item 8.3, policy I-43, Use of Technology and Digital Citizenship. Trustee Guzzo?
It resides with the House of Commons, the School Board, except the recommendation of the Policy Committee, that policy I-43, Use of Technology and Digital Citizenship, be approved as amended.
Do we have a seconder? Trustee Agnew, discussion? Just trustee Carabella?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So we've, we had quite a robust discussion at our policy meeting, and on further reflection, I, I also have some extra questions. Just for clarification, when do students, at what grade level do students get assigned their emails? their emails? So, whoever can answer that?
Do we have a superintendent who can answer that question?
Or, or they're issued, the first time they're issued?
Superintendent Kroll?
I can stand corrected, but my understanding is that it is with registration. If you give me a minute, I can check and see if my daughter has an account.
Okay.
So, that's what, yeah, so JK and SK would have, so, um, and then, um, that's what our discussion was about last time at the policy meeting, and I'm just curious as to the, the look of that email, if it's, uh, if it's very clear that it's like first name, dot, last name, at a, at a school board domain, or can I get clarification on what it looks like?
Yes, mister, yes, trustee Duarte?
I think I can, I, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's just your first name, dot, last name, dot, the last three digits, so your OEM number, at students.hcds.org.
Trustee Duarte, did you have something to add?
Uh, trustee Mazza answered the question.
Might want to understand, through you, Mr. Chair, it might want to understand that's the way it's given to you from the very first time you register, and you keep that with you right through to high school?
Uh, do we, superintendent Kroll, is that correct?
Yeah, that's the intention of it, so that it's, it's created, I can see my daughter has one, so it would have been created when she was registered in kindergarten, and it would, by, by logic, and that, the intent is that it would carry through with those students, um, through, through the, it doesn't change, no.
Just a question.
Trustee Agnew?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So, it's a, so it's created, um, but when is it actually given, provided to them, uh, for usage?
So, I can speak to how it's used in an elementary school, um, so it's, that information's held until the teacher gives that information to the student, right? So that it's, the student would only access that through by, with the teacher showing them how to access that account.
All right, and a follow-up question?
Certainly.
Thank you. And then, how are parents made aware of the email and, and its distribution, and how it's being utilized, and what the email address is, and all those sorts of pieces?
I mean, I can speak to how we would share that information in my previous schools, that's something that, when those accounts were created, as we would with any software, if it's something that we find that we're going to be using regularly with, with, with students, that we're going to be communicating that to parents through a letter. So, especially if it's something that we're going to be intending that students are not only using at school, but also at home.
Question?
Certainly.
So, the parents would receive a letter then saying, you know, your child has received this email address, it will be used for X, Y, Z, and just letting them know the intent of the, you know, that it's being provided, and what the intent and how it's being utilized? Is that, am I correct? And is that consistent with all schools?
Through you, uh, Mr. Chair. So, we do have our student information form that goes home in September with, um, all of the items that we share with parents in terms of notice and consent, and I know our privacy officer spoke about that as well at our, uh, policy meeting. So, we've specifically added a piece that speaks to the fact that we're providing notice that email addresses will be generated, and what the intent is. So, it is a revised form, because we spent quite a bit of time looking at that form in conjunction with the review of our policy and our procedure, so it's pretty explicit.
Trustee Intomasi? Through you, Mr. Chair. So, um, let me understand this, so that form goes home, but who actually has the authority to activate it, seeing that they're children, they're underage? Does the parent actually activate it, or does the student?
Through you, Mr. Chair. It would be activated through, uh, with, the student would be activating that account with the support of the classroom teacher, um, and notice would be provided to the parent.
So, you also have a parent consent along with that?
It's not consent, it's notice, because it's a ministry, it supports our ministry tools, so Office three sixty-five and a number of the other tools that we went through, and that's why we generate those emails to begin with. And so, only if the class is actually using one of the tools that are ministry mandated and supported, would they even be using that email address.
Trustee Carabella?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So, this is, um, I would, I know we talked about that notice piece versus a consent piece, and I think that, um, most parents would like to consent, uh, when their email would be first issued to their child, so that, it's like, uh, an extra letter that outlines, um, this is important, your child has now an email that has inbox, outbox. People could write them an email, and they can sign up for things, um, with that email. It's a functioning email, not just within our domain and, um, those apps that, uh, we choose. Um, and that, um, the AMP, AMP FIPPA has this recommendation, and with respect, I don't think that should replace a parental consent, um, and it could be something that's, as you say, on registration, that it's made clear that parents would consent, um, that, that they consent means that they know it's active consent, that they're aware that their child has received an email, especially like you register in JK, SK, grade one, two, three, certainly, um, I could see that being important. So, I, I will propose an amendment, but we can still talk about it.
Uh, trustee Duarte, and trustee Agnew, did you have a comment?
I did, but I just wanted to tell-
Okay, trust, uh, so we'll go trustee Duarte, then trustee Charlebois?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, question here to, to superintendent Balu, uh, the, you, you mentioned about the form going home in the month of September, where the parents sign off and say, my child will follow digital best practices and all this stuff. Is that a notice, or is it a consent?
Through you, Mr. Chair. The form that goes home in September captures all kinds of information that we collect about students and that we share with parents, so it is notice that we provide to parents that indicates that an email would be generated for the purpose of using our Office three sixty-five and our ministry mandated tools. Um, I do know that we've had quite a bit of discussion around that piece, and going through the review of the policy with superintendent Precassan, with our IT department, with Sandra Rivera, our privacy, it really would be quite difficult, and I don't think it's within the means of our board to be able to do a signed-off consent piece, nor is it required. Um, and she did speak to great length around the AMP FIPPA, and I understand what you're saying. I know that part of the conversation was, we share the information as notice, and if a family took particular, um, didn't want their child to have that email, then they always have the opportunity and the option to opt out, and we've included in that form that if they do have a concern, then they can reach out to the principal. But to be able to have the option to go student by student across our system by app is really not feasible, or required.
Well, ha, we have trust-
Fall, fall, quick.
You have a follow-up?
Yes.
Sneaky, sneaky, okay.
Uh, I'm still confused about the intent of that form that goes out in the month of September. As a parent, I've signed off on a whole list of items, it's not only emails or digital citizenship, it's also custodial relation, custo, custody of parents, it's, uh, it's about who will pick your child up, emergency information. I don't think that is notice, that is kind of consent too. So, can you clarify on that part too? It's a form having lots of, lots of stuff-
Certainly, certainly. So, there are quite a few parts to the form, you are correct. The first two pages, off the top of my head, is where parents are actually signing off and providing consent, and then there are possib-, two, possibly three additional pages, front and back, that have all the information detailed. So, that piece is for the parent to keep for their own reference, so that they understand what they're being provided notice of, and what they're cons-, what they've consented to. So, all of the information is in that package, it's not just a small little blurb of information. And it goes home with every student in our system at the beginning of the school year, so we can collect that information on an annual basis. So, we don't take it for granted that things remain static, so if a family, for some reason, decides the following year that they are not, um, in favor of the email, then they have the opportunity to change that and provide the school with current information.
Thank you. We have trustee Charlebois, trustee Carabella, then trustee Agnew.
So, I'd just like to comment on the, the sort of consent part. It's, like, I, I understand a parent's concerns of their child having access to an email, and that gives you access to, whether it's a, you know, in our domain, you're right, it does give you access to sign up for, you know, a YouTube account, or this or that. Uh, but, you know, we, we talked about it at the policy meeting, is these emails are one hundred percent required to access the technological services that our classrooms are using, so I think that notice should be all that's needed. I don't think a, a parent should be able, uh, you know, should be the one to restrict their child out of ignorance. If a parent doesn't know what the email's being used for, and says, I don't consent on my child using this, what they've ultimately done is stripped their child of access to every single digital platform our board uses, and, uh, you know, as, as a modern, you know, a modernizing society, and the fact that technology is used in our classroom every single day, whether it's a teacher using PowerPoint, uh, or students actually on their devices, I think that notice is all that should be needed, because we, we don't go to the school board and say, I don't want my student using this textbook, so why should we be able to go to the, the board and say, I don't want my student to have access to, uh, you know, Microsoft Office or Google Classroom?
Trustee Carabella?
Well, um, I don't think it's such a big deal. Um, well, okay, I'm not there, but I've, I did see the information sheet that kids, parents sign off on, and it can easily be placed there. I think that, uh, upon registration, uh, if you're in the primary grades, um, it's a bit more, parents, consent or notice, it's just like a parent's signature saying, I'm aware my child has been given an email, this is the email address, and these are the platforms that he can access, and, and it's an, another piece of, one more piece of paper, but it's given at the same time. I don't think going forward, you would, you would backtrack. At this point, I'm saying, um, going forward with the policy, that, like, starting next September, I could see grade JK to SK getting, JK to grade three, the primary, um, grades getting, uh, uh, just a, a, a letter saying, your child has an email, this is what it is, and it will stay with them, and this are the apps they can access, and, you know, sign here.
Trustee Agnew, then trustee Zarnata, then trustee Charlebois, then trustee Duarte. Let me get more ink for my pen.
And more, do you need more paper as well?
I think so.
Sorry, I just need a clarification question, so, um, so understanding that it is part of the piece, the amendment's going to have it as part of the piece when they sign at the beginning of the school year, notice of X, Y, Z, consent for X, Y, Z, and then, again, you know, so let's say that they're coming in at grade one, for argument's sake, they're registering in grade one, they're being assigned this email address, but perhaps it is not being actively used until grade three, when the teacher starts getting them onto that platform. I know that superintendent Kroll had mentioned that, sorry, that at that point, um, some teachers will choose to send home a letter that says, you know, your child is going to be, so, so, but, but is, is that done at every school? Like, I guess the question I'm asking is, there's a lot of forms you fill out at the beginning, and I'm just wondering, sort of further to what trustee Carabella is saying, is that, is there an opportunity for us to remind those parents when that email actually starts being utilized, that this is what it's being utilized for, it's actively being used? Because you can kind of forget between grade one and grade three, and some parents may not even, they may not even understand when you're signing all those forms, when they first register, what that actually means. So, I'm just wondering, you know, is there a place for that letter from the teacher when they actually start utilizing that email address to say, a reminder, your child has been assigned an email, here's what it's being utilized for?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So, we do have a, a corresponding procedure that, um, went with the policy. Um, one of the appendices in the procedure is an actual consent form for online educational applications and tools that are outside of the HCDSB ones that are approved. Um, I hear what you're saying. I, I'm not opposed to creating or co-creating a letter of some sort that we could add to the procedure that outlines, maybe more explicitly, that can go home. Again, it's not a consent, I, I think that, I want to be clear about that, for all the reasons I gave around the difficulties with providing consent to all the students in our school board, and the limitations, um, but, you know, I'm open to co-creating an appendix that we can add to our procedure, that's a letter that any teacher can use in our primary grades, just saying, this is, these are some of the things that we do, this is why, I think giving, I think what we're, what we're talking about is the rationale, and making sure parents understand the why, um, and how that will be used or not used. Because to send the email home when it's not even being used, for what purpose, right? Until it's age appropriate, and the teacher determines that, um, so I, I don't see why we couldn't add sort of more of a standard form to our procedure.
Just a follow-up, I'm being sneaky?
Good.
Just a follow-up to that, and more of a comment, is that, again, I just, I think that, you know, we're looking at, ideally, that email address is being utilized for, you know, the things that it's being designed for, but in the event that it is being used somewhere else, I just think reminder to parents that this email is in use, and it is being utilized, it just, I think, allows for a system of checks and balances, there's parents out there who want to check and see what accounts their kids are using, how they're using them, so, you know, maybe, again, just that, you know, that reminder that these are active, they're being used, here's what they're being used for, uh, you know, I, I think that's what I'm, just to sort of further engage parents in that piece of, you know, this is being used all the time, in, in a number of different capacities.
I would also add that we have added more information to our board site, um, explaining our, um, Office three sixty-five usage in all of our schools as well, to, again, provide more information to our parents.
Uh, we have, so, just a little bit housekeeping, we have trustee Zarnata, trustee Charlebois, trustee Duarte, trustee Carabella, secretary Daly, did you have?
Just to, through you, Mr. Chair, just to remind trustees that the resolution, uh, before you is the one that's been recommended by the policy committee for acceptance.
Thank you. Trustee Zarnata?
Um, through you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say, originally coming into this meeting, if we have notice given at the beginning of the year, and then, I remember my children going through the elementary school, and I got a notice that, hey, Billy's getting this email, then at that point, as a parent, I can decide what I want to do. Let him use it, or do I want to call the school and say, hey, that's my choice as a parent? I would never speak for other parents' choices, so I think if we have those two, the notice goes out, and then as parents, you have a decision, because really, at the beginning of the year, as a parent, if you have multiple children, that paperwork's like this in September, right? So, you're trying to get through all the, the paperwork, so I think that would work perfectly.
Trust, we, we have trustee Charlebois, trustee Duarte, trustee Carabella?
So, so I think the, the idea behind it got blinded by the word consent that keeps being used, like, uh, what trustee Carabella was mentioning, uh, you know, a, a signed form saying you're aware of it, but it wasn't, she didn't suggest a consent form, she should just, just suggested a parental signature saying, you know, we, I have seen this, I, I understand that my, uh, you know, my son or daughter, uh, has been given access to this, so I think that we've kind of gone a little bit off track, because we heard the idea consent, and then it's been kind of back and forth, uh, but, you know, do, do I think the idea of informing parents is a great idea? Of, of course, I mean, parents are informed of everything else, why not give them a letter saying, this is what your child's being used for? So, I would like to touch on the fact that you mentioned, uh, you know, listing all the applications that they can use. There are so many applications that the email gives us access to, we don't see this much in, like, the elementary grades, but like, grade seven and eight, I know that, like, classroom teachers had suggested that we use, you know, a total variety of tons of different resources that we have access to, so, you know, if we list the applications, let's make sure that we clarify that there are still more that aren't listed that can be used, uh, because we don't want a parent coming back to us and saying, well, my kid signed up for BibMe, the, uh, you know, Biblia are the citation helper, and it wasn't listed. Uh, but, you know, going back to, to what I mentioned, I, I don't see a problem why we should send a letter home, but, you know, as director Daly mentioned, uh, you know, we, we did discuss this fully in depth at policy, uh, a few weeks ago, and we spent a lot of time on it, uh, so, you know, the idea of sending the letter home, that's great, but I don't think this really has anything to do with the policy that's coming forward.
Trustee Duarte, then we have trustee Carabella.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Just a comment to trustee Charlebois, uh, when you said, uh, about, I would never prevent my son from, uh, I mean, not having an email, I would like my, my kids to have email, but we're talking about JK to grade three, that, that timeframe, okay, which is very critical. I think, and as a parent, we sign off on a lot of forms, I would, I'm, I'm okay with, with a notice or a consent form, uh, okay, I'm okay with that. I think, and as a parent, we sign off on a lot of forms. I'm okay with the notice or consent form. Okay, I'm okay with that. Again, I do not know if this needs to be part of the discussion right now. If it's going to be addressed in procedure, we should proceed with the policy as it stands.
Trustee Carabella?
Okay, so I'd just like to put forward a motion, an amendment then, to the policy, to include an amendment that would say, "Parents shall give a notice of consent when students are issued email addresses for the first time, and be informed as to the platforms that the students will be using and have access to." This will be required for students in JK to grade three.
Do we have a seconder for that motion?
Yeah. Oh, oh, "Parents shall be given a notice of consent."
Do we have a seconder for that amendment, I should say?
I'll second that.
Uh, that's trustee Intomasi? Discussion? Trustee Duarte?
Trustee Carabella, you used the word "notice of consent." Can we just remove the word "consent," because it's not required or mandated, and keep the word "notice"? If it's a friendly amendment that we could do, I would like to support that.
Okay. So, "Parents shall give..." "Parents shall be given a notice to sign when students are issued email addresses for the first time, and be informed as to the platforms that the student will be using and have access to."
Trustee, sorry, secretary Daly?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure that's an amendment to the resolution that's standing on the floor. The resolution on the floor is to accept the recommendation of the policy committee to pass this policy. I'm not sure that's an amendment to that resolution.
It would be an amendment to that policy, that there's nothing in the policy that has the word "parent" in it. And it's just bringing forth, under one of the requirements that we're dealing with, the technology and digital citizenship starts with an email address. And this is just saying that when the children are first issued their email address, that parents are aware, and that they actually sign something, that they are aware of their child getting an email in the primary grades.
Trustee Guzzo?
Through you, Mr. Chair, sorry, if I may?
Please do.
So I'm having a difficult time hearing, so can you just, could you, Mr. Chair, could you repeat what the motion on the floor is? Because I get confused as to why we're making an amendment to a policy that's been revised at the policy committee, and has already been voted on and brought forward. If it's a revision, I believe it would have to be reverted back to the policy committee, our recommendation, because it's a change to the policy.
Secretary Daly, is that correct, that a change to this policy would have to be referred back to the policy committee?
That's correct. And just so we're clear, what we're essentially doing is trying to take something out of procedure and put it into policy. We have it in our procedure in terms of informing parents. But that'd be correct. If we want to revise the policy, it should go back to policy.
And just, sorry, again, through you, Mr. Chair, just another point. The notice that is sent out does disclose to parents. It's just, it's not an option. It's not that you have to sign up for the email. It just notifies everybody that an email will be assigned to the child. Again, this was all brought forward and discussed at the last policy meeting, when these changes were made, and recommended and voted on at the policy meeting.
Trustee Carabella?
Well, we can refer back to policy if that's the consensus. But it came from the policy meeting here, to be voted on finally. And we can propose amendments, again, because that's what we do. We make amendments. Just because a week ago, or three weeks ago, it didn't pass, and now, you know, there's the chance it can pass, we can make amendments. That's what we do, make amendments, and we vote on them.
This has already been voted on and recommended as a group at the policy committee. And I believe the motion that you brought forward was defeated at the policy committee, and this is what was decided upon at the policy committee for this policy, and that's why it's being presented. We collectively agreed and voted on bringing it forward here as a board, for it to be recorded and passed officially.
Trustee Carabella?
The amendment that I made at the policy meeting was quite different. It asked for active consent for all elementary students, every year, from JK, well, I thought, grade one to grade eight. So it's quite substantially different. The motion, I think trustee Guzzo, I didn't have my microphone on, was that parents shall be given, how did I say it? Parents shall be, shall be given a form to sign when their child is issued the email address for the first time, and be informed as to the platform the student will be using and have access to. And this will be required for students in JK through to grade three. So it's quite different. It's less extensive, less cumbersome, that it's not every year, but your first time the email is issued. And again, it's the parent piece, that parents are aware, these are primary students, and that's the new amendment I made.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Again, I'm, and I don't have, unfortunately, I don't have my little partner. But I still believe a change to a policy that's recommended through the policy committee, I believe it would have to be referred back to the policy committee to change the policy. We're not voting on a motion, we're voting on a policy.
Point of order, um...
Trustee O'Brien?
Point of order, wherein our bylaws doesn't say we cannot do this. Like, I'm looking at them, and I don't see it. So this is, the policy was brought at the board meeting. We're making an amendment. That's parliamentary procedure. So I don't see anything in our bylaws that says it must go back to policy before we can make a change.
Policy meeting doesn't have binding authority. That's why it always goes to the board meeting for the final binding authority. And we have the parliamentary procedures to bring up amendments.
So we can... Trustee Intomasi?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So we do have the ability to override the suggested motion that came up from policy. We can make the changes here, as long as we get a two-thirds majority.
A simple majority.
Trustee Intomasi, could you repeat your comment a little louder for trustee Guzzo?
So what I was saying is that we do have the capacity here right now to make the changes. A simple majority would do it. Thank you.
I would agree with that. There's a motion on the floor, an amendment to the original motion. If it's the will of the board, it can pass with a simple majority. If it's not the will of the board, then we would defeat that amendment and go back to the original amendment.
At this point, we've had quite a bit of discussion on this matter. Are we prepared to vote on the motion as amended? Is that correct, Rosie?
To vote on the amendment first, and then...
Are we prepared to vote on the amendment? Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Okay. Good, good point. Can you read your amendment again, trustee Carabella?
Rosie, did... Could you read it out, so that I...
...that parents shall be given a notice to sign when a student's email is issued for the first time, and be informed as to the platforms the students will be using and have access to. This will be required for JK through to grade three.
Are we prepared to vote? Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Maza?
In favor.
Trustee Intomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo? Trustee Guzzo, are you there?
Oh, sorry, opposed.
Opposed, thank you. Trustee Charlebois?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee Zarnata? Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Herrero?
In favor.
Four to three, motion passes, amendment passes. Moving on to 8.4, policy...
Point of order, now we need to vote on the policy.
Oh, sorry. So now we're voting on the policy as amended? Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Maza? Trustee Intomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
Opposed.
Trustee Charlebois?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Trustee Zarnata?
Opposed.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Motion, oh, sorry, trustee Herrero?
In favor.
Uh, motion as amended passes. 8.4, policy 207, the school day daily session, elementary and secondary. Moved by trustee Guzzo. Do we have a seconder? Or sorry, trustee Guzzo, could you read the policy?
...that the policy committee that policy II dash 07, the school day daily sessions, elementary, secondary, be approved as amended.
Do we have a seconder? Uh, trustee Duarte? Discussion? Looks like we're all discussed out, so we will go to a vote. Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Maza? Trustee Intomasi?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo? Trustee Charlebois?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Zarnata? Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Herrero?
In favor.
Motion passes. 8.5, uniform supplier contract extension, superintendent loss.
Through you, Mr. Chair. In front of you will see the action report, and this came out of the last policy meeting on April 9th. And we're requesting board to approve a one-year extension to our current uniform supplier, so that, A, we can address the items in policy that came up in, sorry, the items in the uniform policy that were a result of the April 9th meeting, and as well as to align our policy so that it is reviewed at the same time that our contract expires. And should I read the resolution then?
Uh, please do.
So the resolution is, be it resolved that the Halt and Catholic District School Board authorize staff to extend the current contract with the uniform supplier for one year to December 31st, 2020, to allow for further review of policy II, or II, or II, 241, school uniform dress code, school dress code.
Do we have any discussions? Since we have no discussions, I'll ask for a mover and a seconder. The mover is trustee Zarnata, a seconder. Trustee Intomasi? Discussion? No still? No takers? Wow. Let's call for a vote. Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee Maza is left. Trustee Intomasi?
Um, against.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Guzzo?
In favor.
Trustee Charlebois?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Zarnata?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Herrero?
In favor.
Motion passes. Uh, item 8.6, information report, through you, trustee Charlebois? There was a request for information? Oh, was it? Okay. My pen. Okay, moving along. 9.1, 2019 EDC bylaw amendment, superintendent loss.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. In front of you see a draft recommendation relating to our EDC bylaw. Basically, what we're trying to do is to align our EDC bylaw to account for the changes that were made provincially. Fred Chiba will go through a short presentation and explain this further.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I promised it to be short. All right, so we've done quite a bit of reports, and a lot of bringing you up to speed over the past few months with regards to EDC bylaw. So finally, we have received some direction from the Ministry of Education, providing us with some allowances to increase our rates, to start catching up to what our 2018 education development charges background study permits us to. This is the first amendment that we're doing with this board of trustees. Trustee Carabella, you've been part of some previous ones. So just to give you a little bit of context, a board is permitted to amend their education development charges bylaw once a year. And there's three things you can do when you're amending it within that year period, is you can increase the amount of the charge. You can remove some exemptions that we have as part of it, which we're not looking to do today, or in the next special board meeting on May 14th. Or we can extend term of the bylaw, which is another thing that we're looking to do. So with regards us to where we're currently at, or where we're sitting in terms of our charge, we're at $2,269 per residential unit, and $0.58 per square foot. As we discussed in previous times, the board has the ability to allocate a portion of the charge to residential, non-residential. We're remaining at 85-15 split, in favor residential to the majority. And we can't change this as part of the amendment. Another thing to note is that our bylaw, when we did pass it back in June of last year, was only for a one-year term, understanding that the ministry was doing a review. So it is expiring in July, so we definitely want to amend our bylaw before this happens, so we don't receive another lapse of funding. Essentially, again, like I just mentioned previously, our bylaw is expiring, so that's one of the main reasons as to why we want to amend. Further to that, the Ministry of Education did release a business memorandum, advising board that there were some legislative changes to the Ontario regulation. So in a nutshell, what we're permitted to do now is increase the residential rate to a maximum of the greater of either 5% of the overall rates, or up to $300. For us, it's a $300 charge, so we'll be looking to increase it to that amount. With regards to the non-residential component, it's only 5%, and we'll be looking to do that as well. Now, with regards to the, and you'll see this in more detail within the resolution, given the fact that the ministry has dictated what our maximum increases are going to be year over year, how this shakes out in the end is that if we are to do a $300 increase per year, an effective year, so as to when the bylaw was passed, within year five, we'll finally reach the value that we should be charging per residential unit as per 2018 background study. As for the non-residential component, however, we're not going to reach it within that five-year timeline. We'll still be slightly short by approximately nine cents. Now, what's different from previous times when we've done amendments, usually we've done it year over year. We've done a study, we looked at what land values were, what our surplus deficit was, and then we recalculated. Seeing that regardless of us doing that charge, we're still bound by $300, what we've done here is that we said, "Okay, well, if this is the maximum charge we can increase by, we're just going to set out the schedule of rates for the next five years." So for this year, the balance of the year, because we passed it in July, so we're still able to collect an extra $300 up until July 4th this year. We'll manage to increase by $300 for the next couple of months. And then, starting in July 4th, up until July 3rd next year, we're going to have an additional $300 charge. So by the summertime, we'll at least have caught up by around $600, and this will automatically update. Just a quick note, we don't expect it to go throughout the full five years. They are continuing to review the legislation, so there may be some changes along the way. But at least we have this interim rate. And if need be, you know, worst case, we do reach year five, then we can just do the full background study again, regardless if we're going to be required to do so. And now, again, we'll increase the maximum rate as to which we can collect. The other thing that we're looking to do again is to extend the term of the bylaw to five years. Right now, it's only a one-year bylaw, so now we'll bring it up to a maximum of five. It's not adding an additional five, it's just an additional four. So we're bringing this forward for your consideration at the May 14th special board meeting. And if approved, the bylaw will come into effect five business days later. Seeing that it lands on May 19th, the Sunday, and no one will be collecting charges, the towns and the city will be collecting charges as of May 21st. I'm open to take any questions, and again, this is... So, I'm open to take any questions, and again, the draft, uh, resolution is attached to the board report as well as the notifications that were provided to the communities, uh, last week.
Uh, Trustee Charlebois.
Um, so, uh, a couple of weeks ago, Director Daley and I attended the, the Oxta Business Seminar where we had this nice, fun, long talk about EDCs. Uh, we were given a couple of numbers, and, uh, it's looked like the Halt and Public got about almost two thousand dollars more from EDC charges than we did. Is there a reason why they're getting so much more?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I promised you a short presentation. It's a long-winded answer, um, joking aside, the reason that their charge is so much greater is that in their previous two thousand and thirteen background study, they had a few more sites already stipulated within that, that study, so larger secondary school sites, usually eighteen acres at a very high rate per acre, so that, you know, it adds to quite a bit of the charge. Um, whereas our two thousand and thirteen, uh, education development charges bylaw didn't have as many of those sites, so we were a little bit behind with what our base rates were. Now, what happened in two thousand and eighteen is regardless of the fact that we did add those, those new sites to the, uh, the background study and amortized their cost over that fifteen-year collection period that we're looking at, um, before we could implement that new charge, which would have brought us to about thirty-six hundred dollars, almost just a, I'd say, a thousand and change under the public board, which aligns with what our, uh, our Porscheman is in the secondary panel, um, you know, we were stopped, and then we were stuck with our two thousand and thirteen rates as amended in two thousand and seventeen, and we couldn't bring it up to that three thousand, whereas the public board already had a higher rate because of, uh, the two thousand and thirteen background study, which, which allowed for that. So now, you know, for them, their increase was more along the lines of increased land values and increased surplus deficit, whereas our increase that we were looking for in the two thousand and eighteen, uh, background study was, were those two things as well as additional sites. So that's why there's a, a gap right now, whereas if we wouldn't have had this review going on at the provincial level, uh, we would have been a little bit more in step with the, uh, the public board.
Follow, follow-up, and then we have, uh, Trustee Intomasi.
Uh, and then on, on that, uh, so you, you showed that it'll take us about five years to get to the, uh, the proposed residential rate, and we won't even reach the non-residential. What are we expecting to, to lose over the next couple of years that we should have had?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, that's a very good question, it's, off the top of my head, I, I can't tell you, um, you know, I'm just going to use rough numbers here. I think in our regional best estimates, we were looking at about five thousand units a year, so it's not actually what's being built, I will tell you this. Um, the, the, the projected value, or projected number of units being built versus the actual are very different, but however many units that they're building year over year versus the difference in charge that we should be collecting is what we're effectively losing, and that will be redirected to the next background study as part of the, the surplus deficit, and then the next units will have to cover that, uh, that, uh, lack of collection.
Trustee Intomasi.
Not necessary, you asked a question, thank you.
Any further questions? No, thank you, Mr. Tivo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. Um, presented for information is the appointment of student trustees for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year, and it's my pleasure to introduce to you at this time, representing Burlington, Dilix Suwan, representing North Halton, Daven Carrato, and representing Oakville, Malika Bambra.
Welcome, is there any, uh, questions, uh, Trustee Duarte?
Always have a question. Uh, page two, North Halton, Daven, Carrato, I think we still have Denzel's name there, and I'd be happy to have him back. So if you look at the paragraph, we still had Denzel's name in there. Needs a correction.
Some would say that Milton is always trying to get more trustees, but who knows? It's never enough, my son, never enough. Thank you. Uh, moving on to ten point three, school education field trips, uh, I'm getting a little punchy, sorry about that, Trustee Herrera, uh, student trustee update.
Uh, thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, so currently in our student trustee report, the three current, three, uh, student trustees and the three new incoming student trustees will be attending the Oxta ACO AGM Conference held in downtown Toronto from May twenty-third to twenty-sixth. Uh, student senate applications for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty student senate are currently still in review by the current and incoming student trustees. These applications will be released very soon in order for the incoming trustees to review all potential applicants. Uh, there is one more student senate meeting, which is rescheduled to be a predetermined date, and at the previous CAC meeting, uh, Trustee Charlebois attended that meeting, which makes it the first time that we had student representation at CAC. And just as a last point, the three current student trustees will be in attendance at the Walk with Jesus event held this Thursday at the Milton Veloctrum. And I'd be happy to take any questions that trustees may have.
Trustee Carabella.
Um, I don't have a question, but I was at Holy Trinity for their inspiration awards, uh, for the different types of Titan, courageous Titans and faithful Titans, and it was very inspirational, it was very impressive.
Thank you, Trustee Carabella. We can move on to, uh, item ten point three, school education field trips, Superintendent Crowell.
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, I'm pleased to present, uh, the summary report on the educational trips for our, some of our elementary and secondary schools, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions? Certainly. And moving on to ten point four, release of two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty grant for student needs, Superintendent Loss.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, I'd actually first start and introduce Jay Chanthavong as our new senior manager of financial services. We're very pleased to have Jay, uh, Jay's been with us for a number of years, as I'm sure a lot of people on this table might remember or seen us, seen him before, so we're very excited to have him in his new capacity and new role, so, uh, thank you. Um, in front of us, we have the information report on the two thousand and nineteen, twenty GSN grants for student needs. I will preference it by saying that we are still waiting for the technical papers as well as the release of the EFIS forms, they have yet to be released. What does that mean to us as a board? What that means is our individual allocations cannot be determined until we get that information released from the ministry. When is it being released? Well, we're hoping for, and what we've been told is Thursday, May ninth, is when we're supposed to get them. Uh, I'd be happy to answer any questions related to the report, or Jay, uh, Jay can answer as well.
Do we have any questions? Trustee Carabella.
Can you please clarify that EFIS, what does it stand for? Thank you.
Thank you, I believe it stands for Education Financial Information System, so E for education and F I S. Uh, but it's what our main reporting tool is, and it's about a two hundred or so, maybe more than that now, document that we put all of our information in, and it confirms our grants, so, yeah.
Any other questions? Uh, Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, so on page one eighty-six, the international student recovery amount. GSNs will be redu- reduced by thirteen hundred per international student enrolled with Halt and Catholic. So I just wanted to understand that.
Yeah.
Because I thought that we didn't get any GSN for our international students.
Uh, that is a correct assumption and a correct point, we do not get GSNs for international students, uh, but what the ministry is, is, is part of our GSN release is they have, uh, indicated that they will be, um, basically taking off thirteen hundred dollars off every international student that we do have, um, not across the province, so.
So they're going to, whatever that international student pays, they will take thirteen hundred?
Regardless of what that international student pays, they'll take thirteen hundred dollars off, so, um, if we, uh, it's lost funding, and it, what does that equate to? Based on our estimates right now, it's about two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, so it's a, it's a healthy amount. That's one of the few things we can calculate without the, uh, without the EFIS reports, because it's a relatively simple calculation, but yeah, it's not, it's not, no joking aside, it was, yeah, it's, uh, an impact to our board.
Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, so with that point that, uh, Trustee Carabella put forward, do you still see our international program as, as being sustainable?
I, um, through you, Mr. Chair, I do still see it as a sustainable option for us and a, and a sustainable program for us. Um, it does obviously impact us, but I still believe we are still, um, it makes it, it's still a viable program that we have, uh, Trustee O'Brien.
Trustee Duarte.
Through you, Mr. Chair, uh, I, I read somewhere that we could, uh, there's a possibility of, of increasing the fees for international students, is this something we plan to do?
It is something that we will look into doing, um, there is a, a formula as well as to, uh, where the ministry prevents, um, boards from raising your fees to too much, for lack of a better term. So there is a, a range that you can charge for, um, for international students, and that will be part of our, when we look at our rates again, we'll, we'll have to be factoring that into it, correct, yes?
Trustee, uh, Trustee Charlebois.
I, I'd just like to clarify, so the thirteen hundred dollars, so are we paying the government thirteen hundred dollars for every student that comes in, or are we charging them thirteen hundred dollars less?
We are paying, uh, the ministry, as part of, they'll reduce our grant to us by thirteen hundred dollars per student, so based off of, that's what we're seeing right now, and again, we're getting to the technicalities of it. Um, but without seeing EFIS report, what we understand is that we will be, so for every international student that we report that we have, there will be a reduction in our allocation, our grant, um, by the set amount.
Any question, any other questions? Trustee Carabella.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, and the part about the provincial e-learning courses, I just would like to explain how that's going to affect us, that by centralizing it, um, could you just explain what happens to our grant?
Um, what I, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, uh, Trustee Carabella, what I can say is we don't have the particulars out on how it's going to look. It is supposed to come into place next year, in two thousand and twenty-one, having said that there is a reduction to our, um, People Foundation Grant in the secondary programming allocation, um, it's impacting us next year, so in two thousand and nineteen, twenty, so we are being impacted on the secondary foundation grant, um, but yeah.
Trustee Intomasi.
Through you, Mr. Chair, um, the elimination of the cost adjustment allocation, were we taking advantage of that, that is, Halt and Catholic?
We, we were, it was funding that we, every board, um, the one part that we have, and I'm waiting for the EFIS reports on it, it can be arranged right now, uh, Trustee Intomasi, um, and until I get that final report, I don't know what that, what the endpoint is, but it can be, it's around two hundred and thirty-five thousand and up from there. And I just don't know if it's two hundred and thirty-five or if it's more until I get those EFIS reports.
Uh, I have a question, uh, Superintendent Loss, so, uh, it was announced, uh, through a press release and social media that, uh, Halt and Catholic District was getting an extra four point eight million GSN spending total. There wasn't a lot of detail along with that, and, and, um, of course, always with social media, uh, everything went, went rampant, uh, in all directions. It looks like we have a bit more information and, and we can analyze somewhat, and maybe you can tell me if, if I'm right or wrong. So it, so it looks like, um, that our actual per-student funding has dropped by about a hundred and thirty-one dollars. So in actual fact, we're going to be getting four point seven six million dollars less with the additional eight hundred and ninety-three students than this glorious four point eight million that we're supposed to be receiving, is that a correct assumption?
Um, it is a correct assumption, as well as, um, until we get the EFIS reports, those are projections that we're looking at right now, so I cannot confirm whether that revenue projections are accurate until I do get our individual EFIS forms. Um, but based on that, what you've mentioned there, um, it is correct, as well as we are still the lowest funded board in the province, so.
Uh, who just got lower?
Who just got lower, so.
Thank you. No other questions? Thank you. Moving on to ten point five, budget report for September first, two thousand and eighteen to February twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen, Superintendent Loss.
Through you, Mr. Chair, uh, in front of everyone, you'll see the report taking us to the end of February of two thousand and nineteen. Uh, this represents about either, depending on how you look at it, it's about sixty percent of our school year or fifty percent of our fiscal year. Um, Mr. Jay Chanthavong or myself will be able to answer any questions if there are any, thank you.
Do we have any questions? No, we'll move on to ten point six, capital projects report as of February twenty-eighth, two thousand and nineteen, Superintendent Loss.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, in front of everyone, we'll see the capital project reports, again, taking us to the end of February, two thousand and nineteen, again, the six-month period, or sorry, the sixty percent of our year, or conversely, probably more accurately in this case, fifty percent or half of our, uh, fiscal year. Again, uh, myself and Mr. Chanthavong will be able to take any questions, thank you.
Do you have any questions? No, thank you. We'll move on to ten point seven, long-term facility renewal strategy, Superintendent Merrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. Um, I'm going to hand this over to Courtney Abrahams, who's our senior manager of capital projects, uh, she's been leading our efforts, uh, as far as developing our renewal plan, uh, for next year, so, um, trustees have already approved projects for the summer of two thousand and nineteen, uh, which we're, uh, deep into now, uh, and preparing those projects for the summer. Um, but this is our renewal plan, uh, going forward for future years, uh, so starting with summer of two thousand and twenty and carrying on to two thousand and twenty-four. Um, every year we've gotten a little bit earlier in, uh, when we, uh, bring these projects, uh, into the board, and then bring the, uh, the presentations and, uh, reports to the board for approval. Um, so, um, without, I, I know it's getting late in the evening, but Courtney's going to quickly walk through some of the highlights of the, uh, of the report.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, I have a brief presentation to highlight the key components of our long-term facility renewal strategy. So the long-term renewal strategy is important in keeping with our strategic plan to ensure the stewardship of our resources by optimizing the financial, physical, and material assets. Uh, we want to maintain a position in a, as a leading facility condition, um, by providing equitable learning environments that promote student achievement and well-being, want to increase the student enrollment, and then continue to attract and retain talented staff. By keeping with our renewal strategy and, and keeping our facilities up to date also allows us to avoid costly emergency repairs. So the school renewal is, uh, the critical building components of the school, the programming and pedagogy and the aesthetics. With our forty-sixth elementary and nine secondary schools, we're currently in a backlog of eighty million dollars for renewal, renewal over the next five years. However, something to consider with that eighty million dollar number is some of those are recommendations for older facilities that need to be updated for sure, and some of them are recommendations for newer facilities that are much further down the line. We are currently fifth in the province for the facility condition index, we're in a very good position. So just some changes with our available funding sources, um, to start with, the capital reserve, so this is cost recovery from our community youth. Um, we were previously putting this into renewal, but due to the reduction in school operation for two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty, uh, majority of the contributions from capital reserve will be drastically reduced. School renewal, so this is an annual allocation from the ministry, um, to be spent at least sixty percent on capital improvement. We are, we do know that this is a funding source that will be continuing going forward and consistent. School condition improvement, um, so this is a capital investment program that started in two thousand and eleven. We currently know that it will be going to at least two thousand and twenty, but beyond that, we're uncertain if this funding will continue. And the proceeds of disposition, so this is our sales of our surplus properties, uh, we have no sales, uh, in the near future, so there's no new additional funds to this source for renewal. So based on all of these funding changes, we know that we have less renewal funding available for two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, and beyond. Um, as such, we've taken more of a conservative approach, uh, because of the uncertain outlook, by prioritizing the facilities and the findings that we had to ensure that we're going to be tackling the higher priority critical items as soon as possible, and then we can, we can look at this in the future and see as we have more certainty, and then make decisions from there. So the type of renewal needs that we'll be focusing on are items like roofing. So this is just an overall summary of what the next five years we anticipate, anticipate to look like, but this may change depending on more information coming available. So, we're doing quite a bit of work this year, and then going into summer of two thousand and twenty, we're going to be addressing a lot of the main high priority renewal needs at schools, so items like roofing, like I said, and then we start to get into newer facilities that we can start to work through the renewals there. So this breaks it out over five years, um, prioritizing the most important items first. With that, we are also doing artificial turf replacement, finishing up the natural playgrounds, and then ongoing AODA improvements throughout the schools. So our next steps, um, we're going to So our next steps, um, we're going to scope the renewal projects in the summer of two thousand and nineteen for the two thousand and twenty renewal projects. There'll be board reports coming in the fall of two thousand and nineteen to review these renewal projects, at which point we'll proceed to the approvals of the two thousand and twenty renewal projects. The design specifications and tender for these projects will happen in the winter of two thousand and twenty, and then as we get more information about the funding, we'll update, um, we'll update our strategy and go forward from there. So that's my presentation. What questions may I have?
Uh, trustee Zarnata.
Through you, Mr. Chair. And just a question, I don't know who can answer it. So even when I was on council in North Halden, Holy Cross is always on this list, always. It's always there. It gets to the top, and then something happens, it goes down a few notches again. I read the verbiage here, and it indicates that, I guess it's not the worst of all the buildings, so it's, it's in bad shape, or it needs to be corrected or fixed or rebuilt or whatever. When will it get the attention? Is this timeline here the middle of two thousand and twenty? Are we waiting for vision, Georgetown vision?
I, I can jump in there, Mr. Chair. So, so through, through the chair, um, so, uh, Holy Cross has been on our, uh, capital priorities list for many, many, many years now, and been denied many times in the ministry. Um, with that, we do have a site purchased in northwest Georgetown for a replacement school for Holy Cross. Um, but to build a new school, that is a, uh, decision that needs to be made through the ministry. So we have to apply to the ministry for funding and permission to build that school and have it approved, uh, through the ministry. So it's not a board decision that we can make here. Um, where the board can get involved, though, is when there is a call for projects that goes out, um, to all school boards from the ministry. Um, our board here sets the priority list, uh, that we send out to the ministry. However, we, you know, through experience in, in past rounds of capital priorities, uh, the ministry doesn't always approve, um, you know, your first priority, then your second, then your third. Um, they can go down the list and pick off whatever priority that they think is a priority for the ministry. Uh, however, the, uh, um, the trustees here do get a chance to prioritize what the needs, the capital needs of the board are, and present those to the ministry. Um, as far as renewal into the existing Holy Cross building, um, it is always a possibility that we could go into, uh, into that school and do some renewal work on it. Um, it won't fix kind of the site challenges that we know we have at, uh, at Holy Cross, being a, a very narrow site, and half of it's in a flood plain, and it's got a, a very large hill on it, and with some accessibility concerns. Um, and we have to be mindful as well that doing any, uh, improvements to that building will then further damage our case of asking for a new school. So if we want to invest money into that school, um, then we're going to really put off ever getting a new building for, uh, for that site as well. So, um, in the past years, we've been adding that to our capital priorities list and applying for a new build, uh, and we, um, you know, we did, in the, in the G S N announcement, uh, there was a provision in there as well that the next cap, round of capital priorities will be coming out in the next few weeks, uh, so we do know that another round is coming out. So, um, that'll be up to the board of trustees to decide if they want to, again, uh, request a, a renewal or a replacement facility for, for Holy Cross.
Do we have any additional questions? Trustee Carabella.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. So the A O D A improvements, is that for the access? What is that for?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Um, what we are doing is looking at every school, and we created an audit that meets current, um, requirements for accessibility. Um, it also looks at things like the universal washrooms, um, strobe, fire alarms, that type of thing, and we've ranked all of the schools, and then it's kind of tackling that. So yeah, it looks at accessibility, so, um, power-operated doors, width of walkways, size of the washrooms, other components to the washrooms that make them accessible.
Just to follow up, I think there was like a, a ministry, uh, timeline to achieve that, the accessibility part of the schools, if I remember well, maybe help me.
I can jump into that one. So there was a ministry guideline around that, or a ministry suggestion, um, for, uh, um, having all public facilities accessible by two thousand and twenty-five. It was never passed into law, though, um, and that's through the last government, um, and on top of that, there's no funding behind it as well. So, um, you know, through our, uh, as Courtney mentioned, through our accessibility audits, uh, we've pegged the costs at anywhere, you know, a, a, an easier school would be about, you know, quarter million dollars, up to a million dollars for some of the harder schools that we have to, to bring up to code. Um, there is a lot of cost associated with it, so we're trying to tackle schools where we can have kind of the most impact, um, with our, our students that are in the building, um, and, and trying to tackle those as our, as our budget allows.
Any further questions? No? Thank you, Courtney. Moving on to eight point ten, long-term capital plan update draft report. Superintendent Lawson.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, in front of everyone, you have the information report, uh, with respect to our long-term capital plan update. And what I want to basically, uh, bring attention to everyone here is that we do have our stakeholder feedback, also known as our community planning and facility partnership meeting, and that's scheduled at John Vannier on May fifteenth, two thousand and nineteenth, uh, between six and eight P M. Um, I'd like to open it up for any questions for anyone.
Any questions? No? Thank you, Superintendent. Ten point nine, Power School Edge Conference, two thousand and nineteen. Superintendent O'Hara.
Thank you, and through the chair. I have with me this evening Katie Ongaro. She's our H R analyst. She's been waiting here quietly for this particular report, so thank you, Katie. Uh, Katie and I did have the privilege of attending the Power School Edge Conference in February of two thousand and nineteen. Uh, this particular conference, which is a big conference, allowed us to participate in a number of breakout sessions and discuss development priorities for a number of Power School products to which we use, and also to look at other H R products that are out there to which we are quite interested in. So, uh, one of the big products, the main product that we use, which is a Power School product, is a, something called Smart Find Express. And it's our automated reporting system used to record all employee absences, as well as to assign replacement staff, to fill short-term vacancies for teachers, E As, and, uh, early childhood educators. We also have purchased another product called Perform, which we have piloted this year, and it's an automated performance management system, so essentially it's allowing us to go electronic rather than a paperless process, and keeps all of our records, uh, that way. Uh, we are now rolling that product out to all support staff this year, and, and again, it's been, um, really well received by, uh, certainly our employees who, who participate in that so far. Um, now, this is the first conference that Power School, um, has actually acquired Smart Find Express. And Power School is a huge company that has been gobbling up, uh, large software, education software providers, uh, throughout North America. And so they have, uh, a whole menu of products, of which we do have some other products within our board, which are Power School. So, uh, a lot of their, the conversations were how these products will interconnect and how they, uh, will be able to talk to each other, and, and certainly that creates a lot of interest, uh, for us to go and make sure that we have products that, again, uh, can talk to each other, uh, quite readily. And that kind of falls into the next point, which is another product which they have called Analytics. And if our budgets would allow, that certainly would be something that we would, uh, like to pursue. It would certainly enhance our ability to produce reports and generate all kinds of reports, um, on absences, on trends, uh, right down to, to individuals and individual school sites. And then with that information, be able to problem solve some of the unique challenges that those, uh, locations create. Um, now, again, this conference is, is a huge conference, uh, because of the size of Power School now, and it's not, it's gone beyond, uh, an H R, uh, services. Uh, it certainly covers off a lot of different products that are relevant to I T, to finance, to curriculum. So the recommendation which I'm making to the director is that, uh, depending on what, uh, the content of this conference is next year, that, uh, other departments may, uh, want to share in attending it, uh, because again, of, of the, just the nature of, um, of Power School and how large and vast their product offerings are. So happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Trustee Duarte.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you, Superintendent O'Hara. Uh, so you looked at the software, it's a product, it, uh, in your opinion, it, I'm not sure how you rated it, so whether it's good, bad, uh, but basically, I wanted to know if you did any studies on the return on investment, if you purchased the software, is there any efficiencies, uh, that we could, uh, capitalize on? Is there any savings that we could make, or is there any plan moving forward to utilize the knowledge that you gained from the, from the conference?
So, again, a, a lot of the knowledge that we gained in the conference are better ways to be able to use the software, and also suggestions that we make in, in terms of how to improve it. Uh, and, and Katie Ongaro certainly could speak to some of those particular, uh, challenges that we have. Um, one, one example, for example, with Analytics, one of the challenges that we have, is that we have employees that may accept a job, an occasional teacher accept a job at a location, cancel it, and then pick up a job somewhere else. Uh, Analytics allows us to be able to drill down to find out how many times they did that, at what time did they do that, and then we can then have conversations with them around, you know, the challenges that that create. So certainly, uh, this, this particular, um, uh, conference is very helpful in terms of not only allowing us to understand the products, but certainly to talk about what's new coming out of those products, uh, and when those new product, uh, enhancements are coming forward, and it provides trading opportunities for us.
Uh, trustee Agnew, before we, uh, accept your question, uh, it's almost ten o'clock, so we'll need a motion to extend the meeting to ten thirty. Well, we could talk about, we could talk about the fact that a minute early, and then by that time, we'll be ready to vote, or we could choose to vote now.
I move to extend.
So trustee Antomasi moves. We have a seconder. Trustee Carabella, we have a seconder. Uh, all in favor? Motion passes. Trustee Agnew.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Just a question on, uh, was there any indication of what the costs look like for that Analytics program?
Uh, it, it's, it's not an, an expensive program. Um, I believe, Katie, was it around, I, I think they, yeah, yeah. Right. So I, I believe the last time we had a quote, it was around between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars. It, for, for most boards who have purchased it, they've said it's been well worthwhile. It's, it's actually not a lot of money for what it can do, and, and data and analytics, you know, that's the future. Um, and, and so it, it becomes very time-consuming for us to try to produce reports where this tool would allow that to happen very easily. Thanks.
Any further questions? No? Thank you, Superintendent O'Hara. Moving on to ten point ten, extensive trip advisory committee, trip proposals. Superintendent Croll.
Sure. Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm pleased to present the, um, report on the extensive trips that, um, are going to be going on in the upcoming calendar year, so for two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. Um, there is one trip proposal in there that is a placeholder proposal, and what I mean by that is, um, it is for the DECA competition, um, because we had to rush that proposal through just a couple of, um, about a month ago, because we weren't expecting our, necessarily our, our students to make it, we, uh, put together sort of a, a, well, because it's with something we've never participated in before, um, we did try to take a proactive step this time around to, um, put together a proposal for all schools. So that's something that's a little bit different in there, and I'm pleased to answer any questions that you may have.
Uh, trustee Charlemagne.
So if we look at, uh, Appendix C and Loyola, are they actually doing three trips over March break, or is, are they all, like, are they kind of, if Portugal and Spain doesn't work out, they'll do Italy, Switzerland, and France? If that doesn't work out, they'll do France, Switzerland, Germany, and Austria, or?
They are looking to run three different trips. Uh, they worked, they all have very different focus. Um, one of them is a music trip, one of them is more of a history art trip, um, so they all do have a sort of very different focus. And they also did work as a school community to gauge student interest before they put the proposals together, so the feeling is at that school that there is enough interest to potentially sustain all of the trips. There is a possibility of consolidating two of the trips as well.
Any other questions? No? Thank you, Superintendent Croll. Let's move on to ten point eleven, construction report, Saint Nicholas Catholic Elementary School. Superintendent Merrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, presenting the construction report for Saint Nicholas School for March and some of April as well. Um, making very good progress at the school on the first-floor masonry walls. Uh, we would have the slab on grade port, and more was on the, uh, being poured today and following up tomorrow as well. Uh, so up next, we have the electrical duct bank to be replaced, uh, structural steel arrives next week, and then precast, uh, slabs to the second floor arrive at the end of next week. So I'm happy to take any questions that trustees may have on the Saint Nicholas project.
Any questions? No? Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. We'll move on to ten point twelve, construction report, Saint Mark's Catholic Elementary School. Superintendent Merrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, presenting the construction report for the Saint Mark's addition project for March. Uh, so all areas of the school are, are, uh, of the addition are now complete. Uh, we have some pictures there of the resource rooms, uh, teacher work room, food nutrition room, and the universal washroom that was added to the building. Um, left to do, we have some, some minor deficiencies, um, throughout the building, uh, as well as the outdoor play area, and other things are thawing out outside. Um, we have the outdoor play area for the childcare center to complete, so, um, that's about it for that project. Uh, happy to take any questions that trustees may have.
Any questions? No? Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Ten point thirteen, construction report, Assumption Catholic Secondary School. Superintendent Merrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, we have the construction report for Assumption School renovation project for March and, and April as well. Um, so structural work in the stairwells has begun, uh, and ongoing. Uh, a lot of lighting and mechanical work as we're replacing, uh, all the lights throughout the school, as well as all the heat pumps throughout the school, uh, and then a lot of work to the, uh, the student washrooms on the first floor, um, as you can see from the photos there. Um, the demolition for the old cafeteria is now underway, so if you drive by the school, it looks very different from the outside. There's just the, the front facade that you're, you're used to seeing there no longer exists. Uh, and we have foundations starting, uh, in the next month, as well as the masonry for the new addition, and then continuing the, uh, mechanical and electrical work inside the building. So happy to take any questions that trustees may have on, on the Assumption project.
Trustee Charlemagne.
Uh, are we still on track to be ready for students to come into the school on September first?
We're still targeting September first to, to start up. Um, we did experience some delays with permitting for the, uh, the new addition portion. Uh, it hasn't stopped us with the, the balance of the works for the rest of the school, um, but, uh, again, it, it is a very tight schedule, um, so we're continuing to push as fast as we can and, uh, and, and get things on track and, and target the September opening.
Any other questions? No? Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Uh, is this where we would put, uh, Will's, uh, trustee Charlemagne's question? I've been waiting for that. Let's do it.
Um, so, uh, I'd just like to get some information from senior staff regarding, uh, the, uh, sort of the, the procedures we, like you guys would go along to approve, uh, mission trips, as well as why they, why they were stopped.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Maybe I'll start off, and then, uh, there's a couple of other stu, uh, superintendents who were more intimately involved in, in that, uh, at the time. So, uh, for a number of years, uh, we had high schools run, uh, mission or service trips to the Dominican Republic, um, uh, either through, uh, the Hopes Program, and I, I can't remember the acronym, or the Helping, I think, Hopes and Dreams. So essentially, uh, groups of students would travel to the Dominican Republic, uh, and help build, raise funds, and then help build homes or schools. Um, so those trips went on for a number of years, uh, at a number of school sites, um, and quite successfully, uh, and became quite popular at the school level. Um, in February of twenty fourteen, uh, uh, the, the board made a decision to cancel some trips that were planned for that year because of some violent incidents that had happened in the Dominican, uh, essentially in the area that our students would travel to. Um, so the feeling at the time was that, um, we, we couldn't, you can never guarantee student safety, but certainly there was a heightened sense that student safety, student and staff's safety, um, might be compromised. Uh, so those trips were canceled that year, um, and I think with a, a commitment, um, to revisit the idea of service or mission trips. I would say roughly, uh, around the same time, um, there were some discussions amongst senior team, uh, and teachers, uh, who involved, who were involved in service and mission trips, around whether the, the, kind of the model that we were using was, uh, the most effective model. And by that I mean, um, while students who were involved in those trips... And by that, I mean, while students who were involved in those trips always came back and reported that they were very impacted by those trips, there was some concern as to whether or not the trips were, and I, I don't want to certainly disparage anyone, because I was a principal at a school that encouraged the trips, that they were kind of one-off, so students would go for a week, and what in fact was the impact when they came back. So a number of boards introduced service trips in the context of credit-bearing courses. So the idea was that students would commit to the trip. The trip would be tied into or integrated with curriculum, either two or three, or in some boards even four credits. Students would be immersed both in the idea of Catholic social justice and the other curricular components over a period of a semester. The, part of the culminating would be the trip itself, and there was a feeling that that would be much more meaningful to students to be able to kind of really ground themselves in those types of trips. So over that period of time, we have, my understanding is, we have consulted with a number of those boards. Probably the most prominent one in some ways is Simcoe Muskoka Catholic. It's interesting, it's a smaller board, but a long history of working through me to we, and then, I'm trying to think of the other travel company. But they've, they've done a number of trips, both in, in Central America, in Asia. So it's a well-developed program there. I think also some of our concerns about the trips that we were undergoing at the time also kind of coincided with changes to our board policy around the extended trip process. So when we, when we first really did an overhaul of how we do extended trips, we put an RFP out, we were, we requested, we were looking for companies, to pre-qualify companies that could meet certain criteria, most of them around, around safety, to be quite honest. And that's really the procedure we use now. There is no board policy or procedure that says students or schools can't apply for an extended trip that has a service component to it. We've actually got one before our E-TAC committee right now from St. Thomas Aquinas. It's revolved, it's one of those combination of trip and curriculum, I think it, two, two credits. So that's in the, in the process, that's in the E-TAC process right now. So I, I'm not sure if that answers the question. Trustee Charlebon.
It touches on a bit of it. Really, what, what I was looking at it from is, you know, over the, you know, the last, say, from 18 years, and, and even what we've heard at different OXTA conferences, things like that, is, you know, how, how do we reintroduce a, a modern view of faith into our, into our youth? And the, these trips really do offer the opportunity for students to get a hands-on experience of, you know, what their faith can go, or can actually lead to. I know currently, like my religion teacher used to lead them down to, with a company called DR Hope down in the Dominican Republic, and, you know, down there where you've got a very, you know, a very faith-filled community, where, you know, really, they're, they're living on their faith. They don't have much else. So I think that, or, I think that the board should, should really take a look at re-promoting these trips, whether it's with credits or just the trip itself. Because, you know, as a Catholic board, of course, you know, our faith is always, always at risk from, you know, modernizing society and things like that. And I think this gives us probably one of the best opportunities for, you know, a young student to actually see, you know, the power of faith and what we can get from it. So even if we exclude the idea of it's a great trip, it's a great experience, I think just the, the ability for it to help reintegrate faith into the lives of our, our students should be, should be considered. And I think the board should start promoting these trips again, as long as it's, you know, safe and equitable and things like that.
And thanks for that. And I, I think we have tried to undertake that at, at, at a number of our schools. Like I said, we've got one pending. I think the other, and I'll, anybody can chime in, maybe trustee Caraballo as well. I think there was some conversation too, perhaps around this table, and I might be mistaken, around while promoting, we tend to think of service trips as ones that are a long way away in other countries. I think there was some conversation also as to whether we could do service or mission trips or encounter trips. There's lots of ways to describe them in our own country, to give students that experience, whether it's in the near north, the far north. So that's another avenue we've kind of looked at. I think really, when we started to reevaluate the trips at the time, it was around safety. So one of the reasons, I think, why we've started to investigate going with bigger organizations, and bigger is not always better, but organizations and established travel companies, is they do have a different sort of infrastructure in place in the case of something perhaps does go wrong.
So can I, can I suggest that the board pass on a memo to, to staff saying that, you know, we, we will, like the board will consider these mission trips and also pass on like a list of requirements? Because I know most of the staff that ran them back before they were taken out in 2014 are still under the assumption that if they submit it, it's not going to go through, that there's no chance. Could we pass that on, saying like, you know, the board will start considering it, this is what we're looking for, these are some suggested companies, and allowing staff to work with that?
They're, again, they are probably correct in assuming that if they presented the trips as they stood back in 2013, they wouldn't pass the current requirements we have under E-TAC. They, they don't meet the requirements that our board policy has set.
Superintendent Crawl.
Just to speak to, to that, one of the reasons that we're working with Aquinas in this is that we're trying to see if we can get this trip to meet the requirements and then use that as a template for other schools. So the intention is that we would work with the staff, the school superintendent, to make sure that we meet the requirements for safety and cost, and then use that as a template to be able to show other schools, here's how we, here's how we hope that you could make this work within your school community.
Assuming that it, it all goes through well with Aquinas, can we ensure that, like once that, like if it goes through and it all follows out, that there, there is a detailed report passed on to all staff? Because I know there, there are a lot of staff who would want to do it, and if we can supply them with the requirements and some possible suggestions, not only do we give staff the opportunity to kind of revitalize something that a lot of them are really passionate with, but also, you know, reintegrate the, the faith into our students, which I think, you know, other than teaching them, should be our number, number two goal as a, as a Catholic board, is to how to integrate faith in the lives of our youth.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. Move on to miscellaneous information, one point one. You have the minutes, February 26, 2019, policy meeting, provided for your information. Also, the minutes, March 4, CPAC, CPIC meeting, provided for your information, and March 25, CAC meeting, provided for your information. Item 12, there's no correspondence. Item 13, open question. Rosie, do we have any questions? There's no questions. We do have to go back into camera. We didn't finish some items. So we'll need a mover and a seconder to go back into camera. Mover is trustee O'Brien. We have a seconder, trustee Duarte. And we'll also ask the public to leave the boardroom at this time. Yeah, they'll have to, yeah. We've only had the one item, right? Yes. And it's quick, it's quick. We only have the, the one item with Superintendent Merrick, so. Yes, yeah. Thanks, miss.